Let's you know that permission to film the meeting has been requested and permitted. Individuals wishing to be filmed should take this opportunity to move away from the sight lines of the camera which is located over by that wall. Okay, so with that, just ask your motion to approve the agenda please. Counselor White, thank you. Counselor Valeria, thank you. All in favor? And that's Carrie. Any impetus at this point? Okay, let's go to five point one. I thought the report was quite comprehensive. I don't need to hear from staff myself, but other than question, but if members of council want any sort of summary of that. You want something? Any specific questions? Then let's maybe do it that way. Counselor White?
I guess I have a, I mean, I think this is an exciting opportunity to be able to, great council, to be able to name these unnamed lanes and I think the rationale for doing this always really strong is put out this as argued in the report. I wonder about the chosen names though. I mean, I do understand, I read the rationale too, that they're following up on Sunshine Coast Flora and that settlers and significant figures are for future roads. I wish we could have a discussion, maybe a little more of a discussion on other alternatives. For example, fictional characters. The Beach Comers reunion was last year and Molly's Lane is also a precedent for naming of lanes in Gibson's and I think it might be exciting and fun for Gibson's to follow in that precedent and maybe name some lanes after the Beach Comers which will learn from Gibson's.
Okay, and absolutely, it's, that's what the Kelly the Hall's about is discussing these things. Andre, do you want to speak to that point at all? Is there anything, any observations that, or sorry, is this Davis?
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I thought it was Katie in the report.
Yeah, I checked her.
High tech department, no?
I checked her.
Okay, all right. Anything you want to say about that particular observation at this point?
No, I mean, really, I need to choose any theme or any individual names. It's, I don't have a particular concern either way. The only proviso is that whatever we do choose is that the road isn't elsewhere named on the coast, you know, even with a different suffix, you know. I don't want to see a Smith Lane, Smith Road in the town.
Yeah, already have that problem with Stewart Road in so many places.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fine, okay. So, I guess the first issue to get past is that the, there's a desire to name the lanes and there's good reasons given for that in here, so. And I guess the next question is, does one want to stay with a theme for lane names such as Counselor White has suggested, or does it even matter if it's necessarily a theme? But that's, I guess, one question. And as the report indicates, we would still reserve for naming of roads, main roads to pioneers and other historical families. So Counselor White's thrown out one comment. Do we have thoughts on that? I personally don't have any strong feeling on this at all. So I'm open to hearing. Counselor Valeria?
Just a quick question about suggestions that have been made to use Flora. Is there, can provide any more detail on that? Is that a widely held suggestion or? I'm just wondering.
Sorry, which is the wide?
The, it says, just those suggestions that have been made, naming lanes using Flora. And I don't have anything that's really native Flora, I'm just.
No, it's not a wide, it was just, you know, I suppose I could have thrown out some other options, but we just had a few lanes that were already named with that kind of in mind, so I just kept it a little bit consistent, but it certainly isn't necessary.
I'll just speak in support of Counselor White's idea because I'm generally a little hesitant to rely too much on the Beach Comers for our identity because we've probably done that a lot as a town, but this is a fun, potentially personal way of, I had to look up all the character names, but there's probably enough to keep us going for a little while, but in keeping with Molly's and extending that theme, I think it's a good idea to consider.
David?
I'm trying to think if, Juicy was actually the actor's name, wasn't it?
Very much a Roosie, yes.
Yeah, because we've got that up in Parkland, but that was the actor's name of the character.
Yes, we used that for naming one of the roads up in Parkland. Counselor?
I just wondered if there was any, like, maybe public consultation with respect to, maybe somebody's lived on one of these lanes for, you know, their entire life and raised their kids there. I don't know if, you know, not to get too in, you know, detail, but I just wondered if anybody else had been consulted because, you know, maybe they have the strong feeling, maybe they've been there for so long, they have a strong feeling about what the lane might be named.
David?
I think you can guarantee that if you ask the public anything, they'll have a strong opinion or feeling about it one way or the other. I don't, we have to get some direction from council as to whether they want to spend some time, staff time on that or not. This was, you know, as it sits, you know, by the end of the meeting, if we came up with list of names, then it's done apart from the installation size. But if we go out to a public consultation, we can certainly do that, but it does mean a demand on staff time, which is somewhat of a rare commodity these days.
And certainly, I would have some concerns about that as well as likelihood of getting any real consensus is probably challenging once you start throwing that out.
Yeah, it was just a question.
Yeah, no, fair enough. Counselor White, do you want to expand at all on your suggestions?
I've already brainstormed a little bit. We've got Molly's Lane, we have Relic's Lane, and then Persephone Lane, Jesse Jim Lane, and there's one, one real person that would be really fun to name a lane after, and that's Mark's, Mark and, or the Strange family that created the Beach Comers, that we could have Strange Lane. I'm capturing this now. And then there's, yeah, the boats, Persephone, and we could have Jet Boat Lane. I think that'd be the most fun one. Constable Lane, Ten Adonis Lane, I think we have no problem filling up eight, eight fun Beach Comer theme lanes. I think that'd be exciting for, again, there'll be some people who knee jerk against it and prefer Flora, but.
What Nick?
Adonis, Nick, yeah, we could do Nick's Lane or Adonis Lane. So that was my thinking.
Okay.
I mean, I could put forward the motion, I'm not hearing any opposition.
Counselor Lumley?
I know with impending, the bills, infrastructure costs, so on and so forth, do you think anybody would be willing to pay to name any of these lanes? Make a small donation to the town?
I don't know, but I'm wondering about the shorter names might be, you know, cheaper. Jesse Jim Lane.
That's an interesting idea, we could sell name, lane names. So, go ahead.
I do need to point out, in a little bit of research I did, I found out that, of course, Relic's real name is, as the actor is Robert Clovier, but he also has, Relic is just a nickname on the show, and his real name is Stafford. So if you do that, Stafford T. Phillips. I'm suggesting we need, I don't think we're ready for Stafford Lane.
All right, so Counselors Hinging?
I will support Counselor White's suggestions. I do think that, I had not thought of them myself, but I do think they add a bit more personality to what we're doing and I, yeah, I'd be willing to, I'm not sure what the list is, and if we need to come up with that today, but if we do, we can, and just to kind of keep it moving forward, but I think it is an opportunity to have some fun with it.
And David?
I would love to walk out of here with a list, understanding, of course, I have to go to council. The, when you're, and, you know, we can start filling out names and, although we've got six on here, I probably would only name five because one is just a short spur, so I need five names. And keep in mind pronunciation as well, that when you're trying to phone the fire department, you know, Nick Lane is a lot easier than to, you know, come up with than pronunciation of Adonadus.
I guess, everybody should know that.
It took me, I had to live here for a while before I knew how to pronounce Persephone, but that was getting a little bit more popular with the beard. So anyway, I'm, and length, keep, you know, I don't think we've got too many long ones, but if you start typing out somebody's full name, we're going to end up with signs that are much too long, so I would say kind of a maximum of ten letters would be preferable. So just throwing it out.
Yeah, I was going to make the point that if we give you some names right now, it's got to come back to council, that'll be in, I guess, two weeks probably, and so if somebody really has an epiphany between now and then, we still have an opportunity to make a change. So, you got five names?
Correct. I've got Relic's Lane, Strange Lane, Persephone Lane, Jesse Jim Lane, and I mean, we could do Nix or Adonadus, I like Adonadus personally. I like naming one after the jet boat, the jet boat was my favorite character. Jet Boat Lane.
Anybody keeping any strong objections in there? Counselor Valeria?
What was the name of those?
Constable, Constable, Constable.
Did he have?
Constable Lane.
Constable squared?
Constable Square.
Yeah, Constable squared.
What was the actor's name? Jackson Digges? Oh, yeah. He might be more of a.
Jackson.
Jackson. Jackson's probably, yeah.
Yeah, Counselor Valeria?
Not to make too much of this because I think we're in agreement, but I just, we're, I like Strange Lane, I think it's interesting and fun, it's just we're delving away from fictional and into, back into real people. I noticed the settlers are here and I'm having a bit of a thought about some of the colonial aspects of naming everything after settlers. Said not that Strange was a settler, but, so I'm just wondering whether we could strictly stick to fictional, that we were not too far out, but I mean, Strange's hard to, Strange Lane is hard to pass up, just throw it up there.
Think of any other characters in that town?
Well, I've got, I mean, I did do eight or seven, and there's Constable. I know we could just have Beach Comers or, we could even do CVC, I think CVC is very popular.
Yeah, I think we might have a, what do you call it? Dream art issue, copyright, yes.
I have a little bit of hesitancy over the, Jesse Jim, for example, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that because I did propose Dear Fern in there, but I noticed it's also called Jeans, according to this, anyway. J E E M E S, it's also, so his character was also known as Jeans, apparently. Hey, it's the internet, it's got to be true.
I think it's Jesse Jim.
How about Jesse's Lane?
It could just be Jesse's Lane.
I like Nix, I like Nix, Relic's, Jesse's, like, I like the simplest ones because those are easiest to remember, but Nix, Relic's, Jesse's, Persephone, and I don't know, if the Beach Comers would be a problem, if we could actually have one on Beach Comer Lane.
You could have Beach Comer Lane because that in itself isn't, I mean, that's a generic term, Beach Comers is a different thing. I think, so you've got, I think, it sounds like, I'm hearing no objection to Relic Lane, I'm hearing no objection to, I think it was Jesse's Lane, I'm hearing no objection to Nix, Nix Lane. Are they opposed if yes is okay on this, or is that an issue?
For Molly's Lane, right?
Yeah.
I think generally don't put.
Don't put it, okay, so, so Relic's Lane, Jesse's Lane.
I have no issue with that. Now you're delving into my professional background.
Nix Lane, that was three, what was it, Persephone Lane, was that the other one? That was okay. Constable?
Cat Boat. I still love Strange Lane.
Well, I hear Counselor Valeria's point.
It's so much better than Strange Road, even if you're saying different Street Road.
I hear Counselor Valeria's point though that maybe we should stick to just fictional characters.
What about some of the, but I think we do have Blaine Lane and some other lanes that are probably named after people.
Blaine Lane is Mayor Blaine.
Yeah, so precedent has been set that some lanes are named after.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we have Jax, McColl, Cruz.
I think they're usually deceased, I don't know.
Yeah, yes.
Strange is alive.
Okay. Relic's Lane, Jesse's Lane, Nix Lane, Persephone Lane, we're sort of okay with those four so far.
And Beach Comer.
I need one more?
Constable.
You had Beach Comer, Beach Comer or Cat Boat, either one.
Beach Comer, Cat Boat, Constable. I think we should probably stay with. Okay, anybody going to hang up about that?
The jet boat's name was High Baller.
Oh, there you go.
And there's High Baller Two around.
I think so, a little more, yeah, it's a little more of the trivial, trivia aspect.
So, at the moment, I'm adding Relic's Lane, Jesse's Lane, Nix Lane, Persephone Lane, and High Baller Lane. Okay, so, you know, this is going to come back to council in two weeks if somebody, as I said, really, in the meantime, has some real second thoughts on that, and then they can easily sort of address it at that time. So, maybe we could just also deal with Mahon Road situation and before we move any of his recommendations, anybody have any issues with what's being suggested here? I can't remember the history on how we got the H O N other than that.
There is an H O N as well in, someone dates back to 1925 or something like that, and there was an H O N in the phone book.
Okay, so that was, that was a settler's name, is that what you're saying?
I'm not actually sure if it was a settler or just someone in the vicinity or.
Okay, anyway.
But logistically, it just, it's difficult to keep the spelling of one, that one in.
The recommendation makes sense, I don't know if anybody has any objections to that. Probably best to do it before because there's other development proposed in that area as well, the one that's just been built, so we're going to have to have some screen addresses until it was pretty soon. Okay, so if I'm not hearing anything else, what I've been looking for is a motion to approve the recommendations there with the names suggested by the council here today. Okay, Counselor White, second now. Counselor Lumley, all in favor? Carrie, I think you did. Okay, five point two, so this one, I think we do need some background on.
On that other one too, Silver Gale was a very positive vote in theory, so, a lot of the roads, Crucial Chamber and all these roads have been named after the lobby fans and others, so just maybe you want to look at an old lobby or an old water to see if it was A and O and. Okay, Armors Beach, so what I've got here is, we're going to deal with some outstanding resolutions in the meeting hopefully determined next, yeah, on the Armors Beach Four Shore area and whatnot. What has also happened is that there was a risk control set we've done through the Municipal Insurance Association, so we've got the recommendations from them also rolled into here. And, you know, final recommendation is to deal with their concerns, improve the marine humanities and recognize the heritage of the site. We have, on page six, there's, in the discussion, I missed it, there's, there's the different resolutions that were made by council over the past couple of years, which way is forward and which way is back. There, so here's the site plan, it doesn't show up too well here, it's not really big, this is sort of a site plan of the area. The Municipal Insurance Association recommending that the building be taken down and some handrails and stuff installed. Now, we do have some handrails, but we also have stairs, oops, here, that there's no handrails on, we got them on the inside of the concrete and wanted a little bit at the top. We do have some handrails at the entrance into the building, but they're very, very short and they're not both extended too, so nobody falls down. Hope they're going the right way. I put in this picture of the swim area so you could see, I took this one probably about three years ago. One of the things that MIA had a concern about was this approach right here. Now, originally, this approach was 12 feet, and about 2006, I believe it was, we extended it, so it's about 40 feet, but they would like to see it go out further because of the floats, whoops, trying to see, I need to put the bottom on, because of these floats to make them extend out further in the water. They've got a concern with kids jumping off those floats in, you know, with the shallow water and whatnot, so they'd like to see that extended out. Originally, this site was a little further out, you can see that last piling there, whoops, that last piling there. We had wooden pilings that went out and a lot of them were rotting and some of them were leaning right over, so we started replacing them with steel pilings and the job, the budget was cut, so instead of eight, we put in six, and that one wooden one is left right out there, that's where the swim area used to go to. You know, council may decide that, do we want to put in another piling and extend that out. One of the things the Municipal Insurance Association was really concerned with also was the boomsticks, which have been great fun for many people for many, many years, and the kids like to run on them and that. They're kind of worried that the kids who don't like swimming get caught in between them. If we do, you know, for the floats, we do need the boomstick to attach it to, to secure it, but for wherever there's not boomsticks, what we can put in there is, I can do get the ropes and the floats and whatnot and load that off, and just make sure that we've got good reflection on the, on the pilings and whatnot to make sure boats don't come in. One of the problems when you're just using float boats to beach area itself, a lot of the drifts are real tummy, and that's one of the reasons that we have the boomsticks there right now is it keeps the debris out. So that was, that's the swim area. So there was motions made that the Four Shore Seawatch improvements had, you know, be done. Now, that, engineering was taking care of that, there's the sewer pipe and that, and there's all the undermining and whatnot that's happening, so that's already being taken care of, so what, what we're here to discuss today is doing improvements to the swim area and the fate of the building. One of, one of the things that last council did is, you know, they, it was proposed that the building be demolished and they put that on hold and what they wanted to know was, you know, the heritage value of the site and go to the public consultation process, which we did, and we got three submissions. And the submissions, one of them, you know, suggested that there was significant heritage value to the original building, but what is there now is not the original building. It has been extended lengthwise and it has been extended out, out front too, with that kitchen area and all that, that is not the original building. The original building was quite a bit, quite a bit smaller. So they suggested maybe, you know, a small water or something being built and put down at the museum, and then we could also do some panels or whatever along the fence and along the railings showing the heritage of the site. Another submission, and I don't think this would stand anymore, that they wanted to, you know, improve the structure, hang on to it, keep it, and restore it, and I don't think that offer stands anymore. And then, of course, there was the community museum, which if you are aware of, there's an interesting news for this area, that they wanted to put a community museum there. But what I have recommended is that when we're doing, like, maybe you can see the railings and whatnot, we can do panels on there. And when we talk about the heritage of the site, you know, quite often people just sort of take a look at when it was built in 1947 and to the present day, but that site originally was called, not originally, but back in 1911, it was called our Buas Point. So we did go and plant a few of our Buas trees on that site, and, you know, prior to that, if you wanted to go back 11,000 years, you could see how, you know, that was just all under ice and, you know, how the glaciers pushed through and made the gulf and whatnot. So, you know, those type of panels depicting from way down to now, there's a good professor at Simon Fraser, Simon Fraser University that has lots of information on that, that he would be willing to share. So that's one way of recognizing it. So for the risk control, I think we've sort of covered what they want, the handrails, they want improvements to the swim area, they would like the approach pushed out further, they'd like the boomsticks removed, because we have floats beside them, we'll need those boomsticks. Prior to 2006, we did, the floats did extend out further, but they were very, very narrow and they were very, very tippy, so anybody that was a little bit mobility challenged or anything, you get kids running along there, you know, they could get tipped in quite easy, that's why we went to the more stable float. I made my recommendations that we address the items identified as a concern to Municipal Insurance, MIA, and over a period of five years, phase in the proposed marine humanities as recommended, and install appropriate panels on the railings, on the seawalks, picking historical facts. I did add a five-year capital expenditure program, and, you know, for 2015, I put $45,000 in there for the removal of the building. The building has asbestos all in the, all in the attic, there's asbestos panels around the bottom, one of the windows has, you know, paint on the frame, so we're going to be dealing with some contaminated stuff. The other thing that we have to worry about there too is, you know, the bank stabilization, possibly that building is holding the bank, helping holding the bank up too, so we'll have to be looking at what can be done there, you know, to retain that. That could be plantings, that may need some rock, but I think, you know, once we're able to build it, we'll know better what we're doing there. And I put in for the handrail installation. So and then for 2016, you know, we can consider extending that float approach, and 2017, removing the boomsticks, and that was just from the site safety improvements. And then we've got the site improvements, you know, it's, there's a gate there that the neighbors keep breaking so they can drive down, and it'd be nice to put a baller in so wheelchairs and stuff can go through there and people on motorized scooters. The pilings that were put in, they need to be capped and we need to re-sink them, turning the zinks on, and then I put in for 2017 that we could start doing historical panels and, you know, the additional floats. Questions?
Thank you, Wendy. Yeah, so certainly the cost of the building, I was wondering about, it seemed pretty expensive, but I came to see. but I came to see it.
Yeah, so, and that cannot be disposed of here. That gets disposed of in town a lot of it, so that's where the cost comes in. Oops, that way, yeah, here's the building there, you can see, you know, hasn't been maintained, yeah. That's where the wall fell off there, it's all rot, it doesn't show up well in here, but it's all, there's all rot in there. You can see, you know, this window here, all around that, how it is, and the deck's So there's been inspections done on this building also, and there's been internal and external, there was other people, you can see where it's getting undermined, and that wall is buckling there, and that's what the engineering department will be taking care of. So.
Those washrooms, are they closed up now?
They'll be, yeah, we'll open them up after spring break.
You getting much in the way of vandalism down those washrooms?
No, that's the interior. What we've got is also on that far wall, the whole floor's falling through, so we can't let people in there to walk on it. It's not in great shape. You can see the gap there, if you walk, it just starts sinking right down. So additional improvements, maintenance, we're warranted, I believe, we've got to deal with that site, I think it's a bit of a safety concern, especially that big deck. Yes, we've got termites, we've got a lot of rot, building was not done to the boat in the first place, so the hangers and whatnot are not there, so better.
Okay, any other questions, clarification of the concern on that?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, there's a, I kind of take a special interest in this little piece of property because it always had a sense of community, because when it was the Pigs Clubhouse, they would always go down there and if it was the swim on New Year's or if it was, I mean, like, New Year's Day or if it was one of the events during the summer, they would always volunteer and go down there and do hot dogs and stuff like that. There was like a real sense of community in the building. I'd like to see that somehow maintained, I don't, if, in the planning of it, if that can be in the back of everybody's mind, as well as design and stuff like that for that type of functionality. My one question is, as a father of children who swim there, like, almost daily in the summer, what was their, what was their, the risk factor of the float, it's proximity to the shore, what was their overriding concern with the risk?
With the floats?
Yes.
Right, if the water's shallow, and, you know, if a kid goes to dive off, even though it's sand or whatever, so they want to see the approach out further and it floats out further, so there's more, you know.
So there's signs.
If you're really, if you're really close to the shore, it's very, very obvious that, you know, you're on sand and whatnot, you go out a little bit further, you know, the water might be a foot deep or whatever. So we do have signs on the floats themselves, but they would like them to be put out there further. Before the swimming pool was opened, that was February 25th, 1978, that was where all the swimming lessons were taught, it was a much larger area, there were flame ropes and everything, and that's where everybody went. After, after the municipal office opened up here, what they used that building for was the recreation commission that they had under the town of Gibson's, and I think it was over, maybe four, when the kids took it over.
The, my only, my only, what I'm thinking of is because as children, like younger children, older children, like during the tide, when it's coming in and out, the proximity of the float kind of provides like different levels of, you know, usage for different sizes of children, like if the float was just out in deep water, then it'd be like a, it'd be like less, you know, it'd be constricted, yeah, to all ages, whereas it where it is now. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to fly in the face of an insurance warrant, but that was just, that was just a thought. I want to man here a second, but I actually tend to agree with your thoughts there. City of Toronto, they recently closed something like 700 playgrounds because of kids falling off of apparatus and getting hurt. You know what, it's life, sometimes things happen and you learn from that, but I think the, you know, this is not necessarily, this would be a calculated decision that we would make, whether we felt that the risk of leaving, you know, that approach as it is is outweighed by the types of factors that you just raised, which is how it's useful for small children to have that shovel. Man?
Certainly, the, there's a couple, actually, a couple of different risks, and even though, you know, the Insurance Association sort of, they sort of look to us to take action on their recommendations, they're not necessarily binding to you, but it's to consider what they're recommending and not something we should ignore for obvious reasons. However, the issue is not just that it's just shallow water, it's at low tide, it just sits there. And so there's, you know, partially, it's whether the kid gets trapped underneath of that, which is probably the bigger concern than for a diving incident, which, so, and it's not the most functional place either, it's limited in its use as it is. And so we're looking at the site in sort of three distinct areas, sort of the upper end, is where they put it out, removing the building, and then shaping the site, improving the washrooms, and at the same time, it still leaves the space open for any future improvements, so it doesn't sort of tie our hands in any way. On the four shore end of things, where the shoreline is, we have to contend with access for maintenance, and also from a four shore perspective, redesign that wall to structurally sound, but also meets the, you know, green shore standards, which actually would be more user friendly at the end of the day. And then moving on to way to the near shore and the water side of things, we will then bring back to council a proper designed facility, taking in consideration paddle users, swimmers, family type of it, sort of family friendly, which is probably the most common sort of strong view that people held during the open houses a couple of years ago and last year, that, you know, make sure it's family friendly. So we'll come back with a site plan that you can sort of have a good look at it and... So today, it's primarily dealing with a lot of safety matters and moving on to the next steps.
Thanks. One of the recommendations in there that the previous council made was, you know, sort of leave it ultimately in a natural state for now, which is, you know, which is one step towards improving it. Lots can be done to that site afterwards, but over time, I think, doesn't necessarily have to work out.
Okay, Councilor Valeria?
Thank you. Just wanted to ask, so it's now, it's 10 and a half months since a third party requested six months to raise a hundred thousand dollars to restore the building, has there been any further development on that? I guess it's, has never followed up on. Thank you, and then just one other question about the boomsticks. Now, we've talked about what the MI, what the Insurance Association means, I guess we can make some decisions. I feel like the possibility of a, of a head injury or from diving or somebody being trapped is something we need to consider very strongly. The boomsticks, I just wanted to, you know, see what the committee feels about, I feel like they have some heritage there, you know, go anywhere and you see floats on ropes and you could, you could be anywhere, but the boomsticks kind of represent our marine and forestry heritage. They look, maybe it depends on, in the eye of the holder, I guess, how they look, but I think it's a bitter light of passage, I guess, for walking around those, and I just wondered whether we might consider keeping those and maybe ignoring the MIA, because splendor isn't the only thing I can think of as in terms of a safety risk, but...
I believe what his concern was, when you put the ends of the boomsticks, if somebody slips in between them, they're really quite heavy, and I think from my understanding when I, when I spoke with him, that was what he was concerned with.
How long have you been working for the town?
It'll be thirty-two years.
Have you had, have you had a report of an injury of that nature?
Um, you know.
Thank you.
I've had some people hit their nuts and stuff.
Okay, Councilor Sanve.
Thank you for all your work on this, Wendy, over the years. I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. One is, in the first submission, the idea for some type of a view platform along with the panels, I actually, I find that interesting. I don't see anything anywhere in the recommendations where, I just don't want the longer term plan, the long-term vision, if someone is reading this or the minutes, when we first started this discussion, what I remember is that, yes, we were looking for something that was very family friendly, multi-use, many groups, a community hub, active use of the water and the waterfront, and, you know, we were just talking the other day about really focusing on our underutilized assets of our community, and Armors Beach is the gateway to Gibson's Landing, so I just want to make sure, as we're moving forward with what I feel is a very sensible plan, that if someone looked at this, they wouldn't feel like we'd lost our vision. And I know that, I agree that we're just going to start and we leave some areas, so I hope that somewhere we're also talking about continuing conversations with potential community partners and funders so that we don't restrict ourselves to thinking too small.
Yeah, but this work here is sort of being sort of, you know, things to come after.
That's what I seem, that's what I identified too in this report, is that it does seem like there is still, still openness to enhancing the project like people envisioned in the original reports.
Yeah, we still have those plans and whatnot, they're there, they can always be revisited, but I think we need to start dealing with that site. Number one, if I was living next door to it, I would be a little concerned about, you know, the building, how it's not, you know, sort of abandoned, not being maintained. Also, if I was living in Gibson's and my house is at that state, I'd be, I'd be getting visited by a pile of...
Okay, Councilor Valeria?
Maybe a discussion for budget work, but is there an opportunity to move the $10,000 for that store of the panels up to 2016 or even this year, some just any recommendation that we're thinking of building down, but?
That's right, well, with those panels, that will have to tie in with engineering because they're redoing that wall, right? So once that is done, that's the other thing too, you know, in my original report, I had put other stuff in there, but I would not want to go ahead and start doing some of the site work, you know, putting in the bike racks, whatever, and then have it ripped out because they're doing the seawall and then have to put it back in, so.
David, speak to that, David.
Actually, I wasn't going to speak to the seawall itself, but more the interpretive science, I mean, I think anything that comes forward out of here is just going to go into the mix for budgetary consideration, but one of the other items that has been on for a couple of years is the Walk on Water interpretive tour, and so, not that we have to do one or the other, but that perhaps there's some consistency with what we do and that we don't overlap the information and that sort of thing.
Do we have an anticipated timeline for the engineering work, so?
Well, we'll be putting it forward for consideration for this year.
Okay, so that might create the opportunity to deal with what Councilor Valeria's raised and what ended up on that list. Okay.
I would like to move this forward.
All right, so just make sure we're clear, this is the forward recommendation, I've just received a report addressing the items in the report from this one Insurance Association. So at this point, it's basically going to be looking at the removal of the building, it's coming forward to budget for that, but we're not talking about the access up there.
What we're going to be doing is putting in the handrails.
Yeah.
And, you know, removing the building, and then after the four shore staff is done, we can start looking for rest.
Okay.
Sorry, is, I know we're looking at, you know, we're going into budget, strategic planning, and we're looking at hard costs here, again, is there, is there an opportunity for community involvement as well, like, I mean, like, the community uses this building as property, I mean, I would be, as a lower business, as a lower Gibson's business owner, I'd be happy to contribute in some way to help with this project, but I just wanted, if there's any opportunity for that at all.
For, what part of the project, are you talking about the building?
Maybe the town being saddled with all the costs of, that's involved with some of these expenditures.
Oh, okay, if you, if you look at the overall plan, there's a lot more to the site that can go in in the future, it can hold storage in different states, you know, the shower on the outside of the building and the washroom, everything upgraded, some of the site equipment and amenities there. In all the public consultation, what I really got from it, from people, was their main priority was the use of the marine site and making it very, very usable. Additional floats on the south side, you know, for non-motorized boats, different things like that, people want to store their boats there, and they want things expanded, you know, it would be an opportunity for people to practice the painting now.
Okay, so you've moved that?
I have moved that.
That's what I, okay, all in favor then? Okay? Let's carry that, I think, thanks for your work on that, you'll move that forward. Okay, one item of correspondence here, so what I take from the correspondence is, well, asking, I guess, whether or not the town is interested in looking at this at all. It seems to me there's some other questions that maybe have to be addressed, but I'm just trying to make sure that I understand. I don't know if any members of council have any comments at the moment on this particular piece of correspondence. I mean, I'll just say that some of the items that come up for me, I guess, are what exactly is the arrangement with the existing tenant. Sounds like this would be extending the actual use of the building, I can't remember, seems to me the town was still paying for utilities or heating and stuff down there, so the issues around that. I'm not sure if this is a private enterprise, so we have issues around business, town supporting business and so on, but those are just some things that came to my, to my mind as I read this. Name it, Councilor White.
I'm fully supportive of being as flexible as we can with Huckleberry Day Care, it's a, it's definitely not a private business, but it's more of a nonprofit that started up in recent years in recognition of the challenges of childcare, getting childcare on the coast, and I think it's, that is alluded to. I think we also have a representative from society in the audience, and we want to ask, sorry, would you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Phyllis Sergis, I am involved, I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak louder than that. I'm Phyllis Sergis, I sit on the board of directors of Huckleberry, which is an enterprising nonprofit, started in, I think, 2013, and has so far not been able to find a space to actually operate. It's hoping to be a daycare as well as a drop-in for fine arts. I think in the letter that was written, it mentioned that Little Hands, which is a very important and well-attended fine arts-based program using the arts building, will no longer operate after the end of this arts building session. So we're hoping that we can provide not just daycare, but programming that is in line with arts buildings' basic philosophy, and also some of the work of the Drawing Network, which is Bob Steele, he's a professor emeritus of, I think I had him in 1983 for graphics, if you can see. At 83, he's still going strong with the Drawing Network. So I'd be pleased to address any questions that you might have about the society itself. Thank you very much.
Um, does, would this be year-round use then?
No, because I'm also on the board of the GSA.
Be in the microphone.
Do I need this? I'm also on the board of the GSA, the Gibson School of the Arts, which uses it for June, July, and August to run its... I think really quite important program, brings a lot of people from off-coast, more than, um, I think more than fifty percent of our people coming to workshops now are from off the coast. So that's a, a nice business venture for the town per se.
Yeah, that's right. Was it about the daycare portion, would that end during that period of time, or?
Yes, it, it definitely would. Um, it's only going to expect to have a kind of a, I suppose if you, if you thought of it almost like a subsection of the arts building program. So it would only operate during the time that the arts building has its lease, which I believe is starting September and ending at the end of May. It also doesn't propose to be a full-time daycare. Its, its basic sense is that it would want to begin probably three days a week and have not a, a full, um... You know, it wouldn't be operating seven in the morning until five-thirty or six at night or anything like that.
Oh, sorry, someone?
Thank you, Mayor Roe. I think there's a lot of information on this one that probably needs to come forward to council. Um, I've been chatting with Brownman for some time, and she's obviously quite excited about her project. But this license to occupy comes up for renewal at the end of May, and at that time, we'll be bringing forward options for council, considering this will certainly form one of those. But you're right, utilities are currently paid by the town, so if it's gonna have a higher use, the utilities will go up and lease amounts and everything else would have to be negotiated at that time.
Councilor Sanjinko?
I just wanted to, to comment further, a little further. I, I'm personally excited about this initiative as an enterprising nonprofit supporter. I think it shows what's gonna be happening with more and more of our nonprofits. They're gonna be working together. That doesn't mean to say when it comes back that we really have to relook at how we're interacting with that building. It, it might be a very, a bit of a different arrangement, you're right. But it's two societies that are going to be working very closely together, uh, along with the, the art school to make it work. Uh, if you look, they've gotten some funding already through Community Futures and enterprising nonprofits, which I, I have a very good relationship with and a lot of respect for both of those organizations. So I know that they've gotten this far, that, um, they're doing some good work, and they're really been put through some, some thought and strategic planning already to make this work. So I, I think Selena's right, it's gonna take some thought as to how we're interacting with them, and, and I'm excited to see what they bring forward, 'cause we definitely need more drop-in daycare and we, we need more childcare options, uh, in the community, so...
Yeah, I think, um, part of it is related to the fact that very, um, many people in our, our, um, survey indicated that they have only part-time work. And to, um, to have childcare provided when you don't necessarily know that you're going to have one day or five days of work that week is, um, a real burden on people, not just emotionally, but it's also a financial burden because you'd say, well, you know, maybe they can find some full-time spaces, but those are premium as well. So we, we do know that we need more care, we just don't know what that shape or, or format will be.
Okay, and Manny, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, uh, from a staff perspective, in essence, we renew or renegotiate the lease every year, when it comes up, bring it back to you for consideration. We wouldn't necessarily see this any differently. Of course, uh, there's an extra partner and there's perhaps more use or different use, but we take that in consideration and see if we can come to some sort of agreement beforehand and bring you back, sort of revise the lease to consider, which we would have done regardless, um, at the end of April, I guess.
Councilor Valeria?
I just, just wanted to echo that, that sentiment and, um, just comment on the proposal. And I just filled out two fifteen-page applications for the Y, the new YMCA daycare, and it's quite specific in that profits will be given to full-time. And I, what I could tell of full-time was twelve hours a day, five days a week, so they're, they're open at six-thirty and close, or open at six and close at six-thirty, which is good for very...
Because they're hoping to allow for commuting, yeah.
Right, so I don't know how many part, you know, part-time spaces that would allow, but I, I do believe there's, there's, it's going to demand for shorter, shorter segments and more part-time.
Okay, so I don't think this needs a resolution at this point, but I guess...
Thank you very much.
The organization will need to improve staff with a specific proposal, I think. So it sounds like there's some, um, awareness, some work towards the proposal. So the organization will have to deal with our staff to nail down some specific before it comes back to the committee or council, and Councilor...
I have another question. I mean, uh, certainly for, uh, for, for daycares, it's preferable to be able to get, get the word out there and have some stability of where you're gonna be at in order to, to attract families. And, and I'm just, I'm wondering if there's any flexibility in, um, negotiating the lease, if that has to be in May or if, or if we can be open to talking to them earlier about it, because that might be what, um, these letters are looking for.
Okay.
We can start tomorrow. Uh, it's, it's just, uh, I mean, there are obviously lease obligations, which was considered, we're not talking about a great deal of time here. And I don't know from Selena if you have anything else to add to that, but...
No, yeah, no, the plan is to bring it in in April. We could certainly bring it, we could bring it earlier, and I, and I have chatted with Brownman about that 'cause I know she would like to have it up and running before the end of the arts school society's lease. Uh, that's a really tight window because of the repairs that have to happen to that building in order for a daycare to go in there. So there has to be a discussion about who does those repairs, how that's paid for, um, all of that other stuff. So it's, it's gonna be tight for them to get in there and get operating before the end of the current May 31st lease, when these people, actually it's May 15th when these people have to move out. But they're certainly trying to get...
I don't think at this point that we would expect to be actually operating with a full childcare, um, situation with that short...
Yeah.
Yeah, because of repairs. And of course, our repairs have to fit either before or somehow lacing with the GSA. I think that's a main piece of it.
Yeah, there's definitely a few things to, to iron out, and there's about four different pokers in the fire, right?
Okay, all right, thank you. So it's basically just dealing with staff at this point to put something together. Okay, uh, any parts, please? And, and, I'll square motion to Germaine. Thanks, Councilor Valeria, Councilor Sanjinko, I'm figuring, Carrie, see you at seven.